Item number three, noise ordinance review.
Mr. Connors, would you like to discuss the memorandum that you provided to the governing body?
You already received a copy of my letter, and I enclosed a copy of the model ordinance put out by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. There also was contained with it a letter, or not a letter, an article written by David Triggs, who was with the DEP involved with the enforcement of the noise ordinances throughout the state. Now, I previously received a couple of ordinances, model ordinances, from other municipalities, to later find that neither of them had been certified by the state. In fact, you'll see in the article that was written, only 68 municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey have certified noise control ordinances that have been adopted. I talked to several municipalities that upon their discovering at the League of Municipalities that they didn't have certified ordinances, they're all going back to the drawing board as well. Now, it's no easy task because the model ordinance is quite complex. It is based on sound measuring equipment, as you know, and it provides for tables that determine the levels of noise that are, would be enforced. Now, municipalities can adopt ordinances that are not in total keeping with the model ordinance, provided they're stricter than the model ordinance. But if they're not as strict, then they're not probably going to be approved. If you adopt the model ordinance, you can proceed with introduction of it, and then it has to be approved before final adoption. If you go with an ordinance that's not in performance with the model ordinance, you must get approval prior to introduction. So, basically, that's where you stand. I will look into the possibility of an ordinance that might treat noise as a nuisance, but I fear that the subjective character of the standards in the ordinance might become problematic at times of enforcement.
In what way, Connors?
Well, there's no, the standards would be subjective.
Okay.
You know, the noise level, you know, for one person is going to be different than perhaps another. I think the acceptable terminology is often used as, you know, at a sound that's capable of being heard by an individual that, you know, is normal hearing or corrective hearing. But I think, I think that's the problem that Lacey has now with its existing ordinance.
I think you have to have something standard by which you can measure in order to enforce an ordinance. You talk with the chief, if he can get one of his folks certified with this certification. Go out with a decimeter. If it's above what the ordinance, the ceiling of the ordinance, then it's going to be in violation. If it's below, it's permissible. But how do you enforce it otherwise, I'll ask the attorney.
Well, certain sounds at specified time periods might be something that would be, have a greater chance of being enforced. In other words, between the hours, certain hours, certain types of sounds, sound patterns that might be, so that it's not necessarily the level of sound, it's the repetitive nature of the sound, or the intermittent, you know, or some pulsating sound. The whole objective of noise ordinances, obviously, is the public health. It has been determined that loud noise can affect an individual's health. And so, you know, we need to have something in place, but my concern frankly is that if we were to investigate the possibility of a noise ordinance based on the state model, then it might be prudent to acquire or obtain, I should say, whether barred or whatever, a decibel meter and take some ambient sound levels throughout the community, particularly in business zones, to make sure that we're not, you know, in a situation where in industrial park or somewhere else, we may wind up passing an ordinance and then find out the routine day-to-day operations would violate the ordinance. So, I mean, I would suggest we do, you know, some research on that as well.
Let me ask you this question, if I may. Do we need a police officer to do it, or can we have code enforcement?
Anyone can do it that's certified in the use of the sound measuring equipment. And there's, you know, classes that have to be taken over a certain period of time, and then the certification. You can also have noise investigative individuals that are not certified on the equipment. They can go out and enforce perhaps aspects of the ordinance that are not based on sound measuring equipment. But you have to, and also, you're going to have to have more than one person certified.
Right. See, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, we got a code enforcement during the day, instead of taking a patrolman off, you know, then at night, maybe once, somebody's on the night shift, two night shifts, have them certified, so.
You need at least two in the police department.
Yeah, two, plus the code, plus the code enforcement. Now, let me, I remember years ago, we had this problem about latitudes.
Yep.
Yes. And what was, how did we handle that? I remember just reading about it.
I do believe there's decimal, we do have a decimal reading, and we do have, at that time, we might have had two people certified in the police department who have since both retired.
Okay.
So I do believe we were taking decimal readings. We have one person newly certified in the police department now.
Okay. So, what do we, do we, is there an old ordinance that we're trying to replace?
We do have a current ordinance on the books.
We have an ordinance on the books that apparently was, became problematic when the defense counsel for the individual that might have been cited on that ordinance raised the issue of it having not been certified by the state.
Okay.
And when that happens, then you're, you know.
Yeah, you got a problem.
Now, I could, the likelihood is that most towns have the same ordinance. Many of these ordinances were adopted back, you know, 20, 30 years ago, have just been carried on the books. It may not have been as problematic in the enforcement back then as it is now, with the state having passed the Noise Control Act, which specifies noise standards. The other thing is, is that most people will comply.
Yes.
In addressing a complaint. So if a police officer, or code enforcement officer, or even a neighbor that calls and says, you know, can you knock down the noise, generally, you get compliance.
Right.
It's only the case where you have to write a summons.
Right.
And then they contest it, and then it comes in before the court, then the judge's hands are tied at that point.
I didn't get a chance to read the state. Does the state have this, the one you're talking about, that probably get approved real quick, does that have decimal levels in it?
Yes. It has a number of tables in it that prescribe decimal readings between certain hours.
Okay.
Including in commercial areas as well.
So it's completely comprehensive, then?
Yes, very comprehensive.
So why don't we meet with the chief?
Have the chief meet.
And we'll meet with the chief, we'll go over it, we'll discuss it, and we'll see what's the best direction for us to go. I mean, he could probably pull a few of his callouts to see how many noise complaints we get and how we're handling them. I mean, this was the first one in a very, very long time that came to the judge's seat for him to administer a judgment on, so.
Feel best to be in that.
Because right now, our current ordinance does list, like, certain times of the day that you could do construction work, that you can mow your grass, that you, you know, and at any time, if somebody has, if I'm playing radio in my yard and it's disturbing to my neighbor, even though it's not loud, they can call in a complaint. I mean, from what the video of the lady that sent us, it seems to be that there's an extra neighbor that does play very loud music that vibrates her walls during the course of the day, and it is disturbing to her, and that's who signed the complaints against, you know, the other neighbor.
Yeah.
So we'll meet with the chief and see where we go.
That's fine.
And I'll have Mr. Connors part of that meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's all I have for this agenda. Does anybody else have anything?
Yes, I do. I know that, I would like to make, I'll make a motion here that we excuse Mr. Giuliano's absence for this meeting and the last meeting, because right now, she's just marked down as an absence. Because for obvious reasons, let's make it sure it's an excused absence.
You can do, except, wait a minute, McDonald's has a motion. Just take a.
Please.
Motion. In all favor, signify.
All favor. I have nothing else for this agenda, so we can get a motion through adjourned agenda.
Motion, move it.
Second.
All favor.
Okay. Township meeting, November 23rd. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Old Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised to Ansbury Park Press and Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting, while I salute to the flag and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading ordinance 2021-27, setting the salaries for the summer seasonal staff.
Resolution, an ordinance, I'm sorry, of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled the town of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, fixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. We need to update our salary ordinance for our summer recreation staff in accordance with the minimum wage laws, so this will be for '22, '23, and '24 for those seasonal employees.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number two, first reading ordinance 2021-28, setting the salaries for special law enforcement officers.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, fixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is again, due to minimum wage requirements here, setting salaries for the class one special law enforcement officers, class two, and obviously, class three. I'm putting on the same ordinance, but there's no changes to the class three. This is for '22, '23, and '24.
Motion.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number three, second reading ordinance 2021-26, amending chapter 211 land development fees.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 211, set of land development fees, escrow deposits, and inspection fees, so as to amend various sections as it relates to escrow fees for subdivisions and land use applications. This is for the fees for the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, when someone makes an application for a subdivision or site plan approval and variances. These are the fees that the developers pay to pay the fees charged by the professionals that the township uses. Motion?
Second, open. Second, we need to open the floor.
See, none of the motion to close the floor.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Motion under orders.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Resolution 2021-286, authorizing interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean for child seat restraint grant program.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing execution of an interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean for the child restraint program grant. This is for, this was as of October 1st of 2021, it runs through September 30th of 2022. This is, the county of Ocean, through this grant program, will reimburse us up to $60 per hour, per hour, overtime expenses incurred by certified child technicians in our police department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number five, resolution 2021-287, authorizing interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean for the drug recognition expert call-out program.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean for the police services recognition expert call-out program, which is a drug recognition call-out program. Again, this is the county of Ocean, all of us police depart, all of our police departments working together on various cases, whereas the county through a grant will reimburse us money per hour for the officer's time and expense.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number six, resolution 2021-288, authorizing interlocal service agreement with the county of Ocean for the driving while intoxicated enforcement program.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing execution of an interlocal services agreement with the county of Ocean for police services for the driving while intoxicated enforcement program. Again, same, same thing, the county of Ocean and us working together with 33 other municipalities, whereas we will reimburse $60 an hour for our time, overtime related to this program.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number seven, resolution 2021-289, authorizing settlement of litigation.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing the settlement of litigation in the amount of $8,000, and this is for a government records council case that we did not prevail in, again, from the African-American data and research institute.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number eight, resolution 2021-290, authorizing contract with communication workers of America.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of contract with the communication workers of America. This is the clerical unit of the municipality, of the union contract from 2019 to 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number nine, resolution 2021-291, urging the New Jersey Department of Banking and Insurance to stop the negative impact on seniors with local banks.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, calling upon the New Jersey Department of Banking and Insurance to stop the negative impact on the senior community due to brick-and-mortar bank closures. Would you like to explain that?
Yes, I would. I attended the Ocean County Commissioners' meeting last week. Commissioner Vicari has been, is our liaison to senior communities all throughout our county, and he certainly has been here in Lacey Township as well. He put me on the Department of Tourism and Business Development. He's very concerned that 24% of the banks countywide are closed. It's impacting seniors, because seniors are forced to do their banking online. Seniors are not as technologically advanced, generally speaking, as some younger folks. The vast majority of scams take place online. I called each bank, and that makes seniors victims. I called each of our banks individually, spoke to the managers. There will be no contraction, I've been assured, in Lacey Township. In fact, Ocean Federal, right next to our building here, is getting depositors from Barnegat and Berkeley Township, and they're expanding services. They've pledged to offer classes for seniors. In addition, spoke to our chief. Our chief is updating his PowerPoint, and the gentleman from M&amp;T Bank, whose name escapes me right now, offered to go out with our chief to do a PowerPoint presentation in our senior communities, and that's for share anywhere. I've also offered that up, you know, because once we have it here, it can be emailed anywhere. Let's, let's spread that education, let's not only give it to seniors, but to everybody. These scams are prolific, these scams are sophisticated, people are getting bit. The latest scam now is one word, record your keystroke. So you could have the most sophisticated, in-depth password anywhere, and if you Google the keystroke recording scam, it's, it's very dangerous out there. And so I encourage you to have all your, all your information up to date. If you have a question, call your bank, go see them. They are not closing, and we are advocating for our seniors. I did a piece on News 12 New Jersey, I did that piece, I shared it with Commissioner Vicari, we did it together, actually. So we're advocating for our seniors, and I know all the folks up here are. It's a serious issue, and there's a lot of people, not only just seniors, that are becoming victims of scams, and we felt it appropriate, put this on the agenda, advocate for everybody. Thank you, Veronica, let's move on.
Do you need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number 10, resolution 2021-292, placing a lien on property for property maintenance.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, accepting certification of director of public works, or I should say, the code enforcement officer concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 1226 Laurel Boulevard, and place, authorizing placement of lien against said cost for said, against said property for said cost. This is actually not for a cleanup, but it is based in chapter 149 of the code, whereas replacing a lien on this property, it was a new house, they failed to replenish their escrow accounts, we had no success collecting it, so now we are putting a lien on the property for $151 for failure to replenish the escrow accounts to this property owner.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number 11, resolution 2021-293, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits, health facilities, and municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number 12, resolution 2021-294, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $1,404,082.42.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number 13, motion approved raffle license application for the Women's Club of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? Committee member McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I have an answer? They're not on here, Mr. McDonald. What did we do in the first meeting in the month?
I have two resolutions to add on, this is budgetary items, it's a item, the resolution 296, it's a resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2021 municipal budget, known as chapter 159 of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. This is for the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund. We've gotten some funds from the state, it's not a lot of money, but it's $454.40. This helps offset our DUI checks, our overtime in the courts, and the cost for the additional DWI court. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall. Second one, as again, the chapter 159, it's resolution 297, it's a resolution of the township of Lacey County, Georgia, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2021 municipal budget, known as chapter 159, of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. This is the dry sober or get pulled over grant, we are getting $6,000 towards that. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes.
That's all I have to add on? You can move on now.
Questions from the committee? Committee member McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Great night tonight.
Yeah.
George Purcell, obviously, nothing needs to be said about him, as has already been said, it's just an unbelievable program that, and if you asked him, the winning is, is good, but I think he would say that the development of the boys and what they go on to do in life is probably more important than, than anything. And then, of course, the Eagle Scout, which is an incredible achievement. Last week, was down at the Atlantic City for the convention, was attended a couple of sessions that I thought were quite interesting, some that I thought were laughable. I can tell you this, that I was happy to hear that the Corps of Army Engineers wants to bring in $16 billion, basically, to South Jersey, including us, to raise houses, take care of the streets of flooding, and so forth like that. However, that committee, which was all Murphy's appointments, Governor Murphy's appointments, kind of downplayed it, they would. I don't think they want all this money coming down to South Jersey. I got the impression that all the money was going to go to North Jersey, and that's, they weren't real happy with the Corps of Army Engineers, only $16 billion. So, that was that. Part of it was the green energy, the green, green economy. Yeah, we're going to have to put diapers on cows, because of the methane gas. And, you know, just, just some of the things that were said, we're just going like, okay. I don't, and I, Mr. Dykoff was down there with me, and Veronica, and the mayor was down there, and I told them all, I said, I would just like them, for one day, to live in our shoes. You know, every one of these guys, it was, it was kind of funny, every one of these guys lives in a 110-year-old house up in North Jersey. Now, I don't know what the real estate prices in up there, but I got to imagine, they're pretty expensive houses, so what are we paying those guys? You know, come down here and live in our shoes for a week, or a month, or something like that, and I guarantee their, their attitudes will change completely. But I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Committee member Dykoff?
So as, I wasn't going to speak about it, but I'll segue, Mr. McDonald talked about, we're at what's called the League of Municipalities, and it's where local government elected officials, engineers, all get together, and we attend seminars, we look at the latest and greatest, and what's available to help our municipalities, talk about the shortage of vehicles. I walked up, there's a company that provides a lot of vehicles from, for municipalities and counties and so on and so forth, Monmouth Truck, so I, they had about 10 or 12 vehicles on the floor, and I jokingly walked up and said, I want to buy them all, they said, you can't, they're all sold, because you can't get any vehicles. But I, I attended a couple seminars, and, phew, these guys, some of them are way out there, way out there. But, but I digress. So, two things, so, Mr. McDonald had mentioned, and we had passed a resolution or whatever, that we're excusing Mr. Giuliano from meetings. Yeah, he's not feeling well, we, he's in our prayers, we hope, we wish him a speedy recovery. And then all I have is happy Thanksgiving. Have a happy, safe one, enjoy your family, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Committee member Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would just like to wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. That's all I have, Mayor.
That might be a noon record, Steve.
Venerable Kennas, I too would like to, you know, extend thoughts to Deputy Mayor Giuliano, hope he's feeling better. I wanted to dovetail on something that Committee member McDonald brought up at the league. You know, when you go to the league, you get some ideas, but you also have folks that are in high places of power, that give the CEU, these continuing education credit classes. This green agenda is coming. It's going to impact a lot of us. You're going to have to have a code compliant house to sell soon. There, there is a strong push for electric. On that floor down there, there was a company who's booked out all of 2022 to retrofit gas fossil fuel cars in a fleet, no matter what the fleet is, up to and including trucks that pull eight, 8, 12, 14,000 pounds with an electric motor. There, these will be coming down from Trenton, they will be dovetailed, to me, if I'm prognosticating into the future, from Washington DC. These, a lot of these will be unfunded mandates. What I will ask of our department heads, next year, there'll be a different manner. I'm hopeful that our department heads, when they submit budget requests, they at least keep in their mind, some of these funded, some of these mandates are going to include part of the fleet in years to come to be electric powered. We're going to have to also, this municipality and other municipalities, if we're seeing the future, we're going to have to put in charging stations as well. All of these will likely be impart unfunded mandates. It's unfortunate, and like Committee member McDonald correctly pointed out, some of
It's unfortunate, and like Committee member McDonald correctly pointed out, some of those folks don't walk in our shoes, and they get to pontificate from places of power. We saw it with this governor, with these lockdowns, and how our businesses suffered. That was unfortunate. And all I would ask from the folks in Trenton and the folks in D.C., let us have input. I want to hear from our people. Before these mandates come down, I want to hear from our people. Transition to law enforcement, spoke with the chief twice a year, we have the LEPC, that's the Law Enforcement Planning Committee. I attended that last week, it was the 18th. So that is virtually every chief in our town, along with representation from our school board, our DPW, our rec. department, where we do after-action review of every event that we had, 150th events, parades, routes, safety initiatives. And we talk, we review, and we do future planning. Nothing negative to report, it was all positive, and it was very well-attended. The rail trail, there's been talk about that. Chief has assured me, it's been, we've had augmented patrols down there, it's been quiet, and we have not seen any dust-ups down there. With that, oh, last thing, Central Ocean Business Association. I've been advocating for our businesses tirelessly, as I know many of us have up here. We met in Berkeley Township, our good neighbors to the north, and we have a good working relationship with Mayor Amato and John Beckione and the folks up there. So I was there at that meeting with Commissioner Vicari. It just continues to grow. We call it the string of pearls town, from the northern part, you know, Ocean Gate area, Pine Beach, and straight on down to Ocean Township, Ware Town. So many businesses. I'm proud of the way this town has grown our businesses. Mr. Reed had informed me earlier, we opened five new businesses just in the last 13 days, and that was just prior to last meeting. So we're becoming a destination, we have been a destination of choice for businesses to open and flourish, and we're going to continue to support that. A lot of drink that we're up here, that's been on our land use boards for a great many years. With that, I want to say happy Thanksgiving, and I want to open the floor to comment. Any comments from the floor?
Can you just mention about the Christmas parade?
Yes, Christmas parade will take place December 5th, here on Lacy Road. If we'll put me on the spot, I don't know what time it's.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock as usual.
Regina, it starts at three o'clock.
Very good.
I knew that.
See you there.
He was testing my room.
I was testing, yes. Any other comments? Please, the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, didn't see you over there.
Come on up, welcome.
Carol Boing, 1225 Capstan. Mr. McDonald actually gave me a segue. Are you aware of the road flooding on Capstan at the intersection of Varuna and Capstan? And if so, what's being done about it? And if not, how will you get enlightened about it?
We are working to, we have numerous roads that have tidal flooding, and we've seen an increase in the tidal flooding since Hurricane Sandy, unfortunately, and I know, I think you moved in after that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We are looking into some valves, and some release valves that will help with the tidal flowing. You don't have one down in your street, but there is a new mechanism. The ones that we put in down in the beach did not work. They're the old style. There is a company out there that has a new style. We have two on loner from them right now. They appear to be working. However, when you get like that storm a couple of weeks ago, nothing's going to keep back those tides, when you had the canyon tides and all the bad.
It's not just, it's, I mean, it is more, I mean, it's almost like clockwork in October.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
But we get them throughout the year.
Yes.
It's any storm, and there's days I can't either get to my house, or I can't leave my house. I mean, three weeks ago, I could not get to my house.
Right, and that's, and we have numerous.
And I got up to go to work, and I couldn't leave.
We have numerous streets that are like that, and we have looked into with FEMA to do a grant. Unfortunately, a lot of our streets don't qualify for the grant because they're not connector roads, they don't go anywhere, so we got denied the grant. It is several million dollars to raise streets, but at the same time, then the properties have to raise their properties and raise their bulkheads, and it has to be done in coordination with FEMA to do all of that. So us raising the streets and raising all the utilities is not going to solve the problem if all of the property owners don't raise, and several of, you know, a lot of your properties down those streets are, but there are some that are not. So that water's just going to come over the bulkhead if we don't have a bulkhead.
See, it's not coming from my bulkhead, it's coming from the street.
Yeah, but there's some lowline properties.
It's coming into the front. I mean, it came through our garage.
Yeah, this is, this is why I was so mad.
I mean, it's up to here on people.
Right, this is why I was so mad, because they kind of, these were, these were high executives in Murphy's.
And who are they? Because, you've never had the honor of receiving one of my letters, but I'm happy to fire a few often.
FEMA's the one that denied us for getting the grant. I mean, I'm sure there was other applicants that, again, that they're limited by how much money they've received, that had more qualifying problems that they awarded the money to. Again, then it's going to the DEP and getting the permits to raise the streets, but again, the DEP wants to make sure that every house on that street, you're gonna have to put in a bulkhead ordinance, and everybody's bulkhead will have to be at a certain height, and everybody's property. So we are committing hundreds of thousands of dollars that these property owners are gonna have to expend in order to raise their properties and their bulkheads, as well as us raising the streets. And it's not an easy acquisition. And I said that some of the valves that we're looking to put in, we have two on loner, they seem to be working. But those tidal floods that we got just a couple weeks ago are not going to stop happening, and it's not, those valves aren't going to stop it from happening. I don't know if we can ever raise the streets high enough, and the properties high enough to offset what the climate change is going on with the tidal flows. We have two on loner, I am looking to get more. The fortunate part is the American Recovery Act money that the town got will be able to pay for that. They have a lot of restrictions on how you can spend that money, but since it's part of the Clean Water Act, we'll be able to purchase some to start putting them around town.
So where do we fall in the priority for those valves?
Where we're trying to weigh the priority of it, the streets down in Forkett River Beach, unfortunately flood more continuously than your street does, so that they will be the priority, some of those Hawaiian, we call them the Hawaiian streets down there, they will be the priorities right now that we're looking at. And we have two, like I said, on loner down in those streets, and they seem to have receded some of the flooding. Unfortunately, that one weekend that we had there, in, I want to say maybe it was the end of September, there was a lot of flooding, and it still did come in on those streets.
So, so we're pretty low on the, so essentially like.
I'm not gonna say low on the list, there's only gonna be so much money that I can also put towards that with the American Recovery Act money, so we're working on trying to get up a list of where we have to put them on.
Because it's.
And if it's going to work on the street, if it's not going to work on the street, we're not gonna put it in.
Right, well, that doesn't make sense.
So I have, I have between Public Works and our project coordinator, them assessing the streets and the needs, and where we're falling in, and we're trying to find a company who will install them for us.
But that would not benefit me, that's going someplace else.
Well, if in the future.
We don't know. We don't know what we could.
If your street, if that valve would address the need on your street, yes, you will, I just can't tell you when it's going to happen. We haven't determined all the streets yet, we were working at the south end of town and working our way north.
Yeah, because it's not, I mean, we have significant property damage, and it's not from our bulkhead, it's not coming from the bay, it's coming from the streets with the lagoos. And, you know, we're $8,000 in just to have cleanup done in our front yard, and our driveway is practically destroyed, and that's gonna have to be replaced, and it's only a few years old. I, you just don't understand.
You know, if FEMA's gonna say it's a complete disqualifier, and the only reason they're gonna give is because there's no connecting street, I want a clarification from them, because you could say that virtually about any smaller subdivision, and you pick the zip code on the east coast.
Yeah, eventually, they don't connect.
Eventually, they don't connect. And what are the waterfront houses? They're dead-end streets, they're at the end of major thoroughfares. So they don't connect.
For a couple years now, we've been holding resiliency meetings with the DEP from time to time. They don't have really good answers either. It's, so, it's something that we're, sort, we, you know, we talk about it, we try and do, you know, come up with some sort of solution, but it's very difficult, it's very difficult to know what to do, because there's so many, like you said, you're raising a road, and then the property owners don't raise it, and the bulkhead gets ready, it gets really cost, you know.
It seems to settle in a very concentrated area, though. I mean, which happens to be my house.
Oh, fortunately.
You're on the bend, though, right? Are you on the bend?
I'm on the, pretty much on the intersection of Varuna and Capstan, and it's the water from Varuna, and it's my house, and then, now, the houses in either direction get a little, but they're not knee-deep, and they're not, basically, either, I can't get to my house without trespassing, I have to park, you know, around the bend, and then I have to walk across people's front porches to get to my house.
This is overtime, or just during the high tide event, or?
This is on any storm and any high tide.
Yeah, if you've ever been down in, on some of those Capstan streets, the sunny day flooding has been, it's pretty severe.
Yeah, and the last time it happened, there was no storm, it was just tide.
Yeah, I know a number of people that live in Neosho, and.
Yeah.
I was shocked one time when I was, we were actually campaigning, and you couldn't even get down the street.
Yeah.
And Neosho is pretty long.
Right.
And so, yeah, no, there's not a good solution, unfortunately, not yet, anyway.
Unfortunately, the states, they, a little money's gonna go to North Jersey, telling them that's where the money's gonna head.
So what do we do about that?
I can get you the names.
I'd appreciate that.
Of those people who handled that session, and be free, right, great Governor Murphy.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they pooh-poohed $16 billion.
Right.
That's a lot of money.
And that was supposed to help some of these guys.
That was supposed to help all of South Jersey. They were kind of like, we'll help South Jersey, but we're not really sure, we're not happy with the, with the way the Corps of Army Engineers handles this, you know, and again, the Corps of Army Engineers has ridiculous amount of money.
Right, right.
So they pretty much do whatever the heck they want. But for state employees to sit there and say, in a session where there were a lot of South Jersey towns, say, you're basically not gonna get it.
So it looks like, I mean, it looks like political favoritism, and it looks like on the surface.
Okay, you said that, not me.
I know, and, you know, and it looks like political penalties, right?
Yeah, that's, no question.
Depending on which way the vote went.
No question.
So I'm happy to start a campaign against, they were opposed to Bridgegate, this is friggin' Watergate, all over again. So, I, yeah. Yeah, if you can get me those names, I.
Leave your name and address, and email.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll get it to you.
And Dave is gonna give you a heads up that I was coming.
He did give me a heads up.
He doesn't, he did?
No.
He's, he's sick.
Oh, is he? I'm sorry.
No, he's bad back, he's not in good shape, so.
I thought maybe he was playing golf.
No, no, he was going to give you a heads up, he's like, you can't go there without.
That's perfectly fine.
Yeah, but thank you, thank you for listening, but if you can give me those names.
We will get them to you tomorrow.
I mean, thank you.
Any other comments from the floor? Yes. Name and address.
Paul Dresser, 70 Arbor Ridge Drive, Forkett River. Do you have a comment regarding electric cars and stuff that may happen in the future in the state?
Mr. Dresser, can you speak into the microphone a little bit? Thanks.
Regarding your comment regarding electricity that may be the way to the future for the state and the way they're gonna go. As you know, we've done a lot of research on Hoysa Creek, as compared that we didn't like the fact of stuff going on there. We are in favor of potentially what Bill Gates is doing in Canada with SMRs and MMRs, that may be actually the way to the future in New Jersey, so if you guys need help, need assistance as this moves forward, we've got a lot of research on it, so our stuff, we appeal to you guys.
You're always emailing us, and we do read it.
Okay. That's all. Thanks, have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir. Happy Thanksgiving, sir.
Ron Martin, 44 Dunbar Street. Just as a follow-up to what you gentlemen had experienced, and Veronica had experienced down in the convention center, people are under the erroneous opinion that we're gonna overnight migrate to wind and solar. And the information that Paul indicated that he would be sending to you gives you interesting cost figures from the time they dig the lithium, until the time they transport it, until the time they make a battery, until the time they chip it, until the time they put it into a car, and what the life of that battery is over the life of the car, it's not very inexpensive. And when we talk about having all of these charging stations across the world, guess what? Where do they get their juice? They get their juice from fossil fuel, right? Some of that fossil fuel is old coal. But you know what's interesting about that? I had an opportunity to work on a project over 25 years ago, it's an Israeli project. They have special cleaning and special filtration for coal plants. It makes the coal plant burn 30% less coal and generate 60% less pollution. So the technology is there. So I ran up the street to my neighbor, who was the vice president at one of the companies, and I said, I have a solution for you. And he said, yeah, you do, but it takes 20 years to implement. So that's down on the boards.